Good evening everyone and welcome to the January City Council for the city of Waynesville. As most of you know, we did meet in executive session earlier and we've already had our roll call. We are all here except for Councilman Wilson who is starting his master's program and we're very excited about that. And I believe he's only going to miss the one night he assured me he would be here for his job. We have again already had roll call and at this time I would like very much for you to in a moment stand, remain standing and we're going to have the invocation by Councilman Wilson's wife. Janice, would you come up please? Janice is with the Greater Faith Victory Church. You can stay at the podium. And would you remain standing? We'll say the pledge of allegiance. And is there a Boy Scout who would like to step forward and lead this pledge of allegiance?
We have a Boy Scout.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Janice?
Would you pray with me please? Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercies. We thank you for another opportunity to be in the land of the living. We ask that you bless our great nation, bless our servicemen and women all over the world today fighting for our freedom and our well life. Bless our first responders and our policemen that are out protecting us. Bless each and every councilman, each and every representative here on today and every family. We thank you and we praise you. We ask that you continue to look over this meeting, be with the leaders and give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need to govern our community. We thank you and we praise you and we give your name glory and honor. In your son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen and thank you, Janice. Want to step out? Okay, follow me please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Like to, we've got a nice crowd with us tonight and we've got some nice surprises in store. And first of all, let me introduce the scouts that are with us tonight. We love having our scouts in our audience. Tonight we have PAC 149 from Fort Leonard Wood. We have PAC 150. Is that St. Robert? St. Robert? And we're very glad to have you guys here. I believe they are here looking at city government. Guys, be on your very best behavior. And then of course up in our video nest, and we're going to ask them to come down here in just a little bit and be recognized. We have Mr. Wallace. Hello, Mr. Wallace. And his crew tonight is, boy, you've got a bunch of them, Tim. His crew tonight is Lily, Haley, Alex, Trevor, Gracie, and Jack. Everybody here? All right, very good. We appreciate you guys so much and I'll say a little bit more about you here in just a moment. Guys, we are going to start our agenda and the first item is of course our consent agenda.
Mayor, can we use that amendment to the agenda?
Do you amend?
Yes, yes. Okay, very good. Forgot to write it down. I have one addition to the agenda. Council people, would you add under special guest, would you put a D? And would you simply write special announcement? And I want to again be a little bit of a teacher in me to tell the scouts that we're doing what's called a consent agenda, meaning that we're going to approve several things all at once so we don't spend a lot of time doing it. You know, the time I'm spending talking about it. But I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Motion by Cecil and second by Clarence. All those in favor? Those are adopted. And as usual, I always say this, this is now the fun part of the evening. And as again, most of you know, Tim, go ahead and make your way down here. As most of you know, as I leave office, starting last year, I began to recognize people in our community who don't get recognized a lot of times. They don't get the awards from the chamber. They don't get the awards from the MRPC. And I began to recognize people who have helped our city since I have been mayor. And I have picked some good ones and I've got two more months of some more good ones. But in December, we did not have a city council meeting. And because of that, I did not get to recognize our December good citizens. And guys, it is Tim Wallace and his Channel 12 students from the WCC. If I could ask the two principals from the WCC to come up for a picture also, that would be nice. Well, we're going to group around the podium.
You're going to have to.
Okay? Get all my stuff in order here. Well, I surprised Tim in his class in early December. And come on over principals, come over, there you go. That's a good division right there. There we go, one principal on each side maybe. And I surprised him and his students and I basically said this to them. I honor them for their support and their tireless efforts to keep our community informed. And most of you know, we lost our newspaper. It is sometimes very hard to find information. And Channel 12 arrived on the scene and guess what? We're on Facebook now. Hello, you can find out what's happening. We're like Tim, if you want to sit there for an hour and a half.
I sure can.
So I gave Tim and his students this certificate and I would like, where's my camera people? I would like to have a nice picture for Tim and his group.
This is Tim's wife.
Very good. How are you?
I'm good.
Okay, can you get us all?
Yep, I can. One, two, three.
Very good.
Okay, one, two, three.
Very good. And before you leave, Tracy is the principal at the WCC. And Mr. John Smith, his name is very easy to remember. He is the assistant principal. And Tim, you want to introduce, are these the guys I just read your names?
Yes, they are.
Well, we're thrilled that you're here and we're thrilled for what you do. And do you want to say anything? We always give you a chance to say something.
I'll keep it short and sweet and just thank you, Mayor, and thank you, the city of Waynesville. We really value this relationship and love coming to these council meetings and helping you. And it's a great thing for our students to learn and serve, so thank you.
Very good, nice. Tim, appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
You got this figured out, don't you?
Yeah, get out of there.
Get out of the picture because usually you're sitting back there going. And then, you know, I've gotten pretty good at this surprising people. And I surprised my friend Joanne Gothay. We call her Mama Jo. Would you come up, Joanne? And I surprised her in January. Joanne is my January good citizen. Some of you may not know her, I can't imagine, but some of you may not know her. And yes, she's short. Joanne is always around. Every event I go to at Hopper, she's there. She also helped Nonus when Nonus was open. Joanne is just a giving person. And I will tell you that I chose Joanne because of her, not only her giving spirit and her tireless efforts, but the fact that she has helped to keep our festivals alive downtown. And you know, when I first became mayor, there were like four or five of those. And you get tired. Our volunteers get tired. And over the years, it has kind of gone down to maybe three.
I'm down to two.
Two? Are you doing St. Pats?
No, because there's too many parades.
Freedom Fest? Oktoberfest, okay. So guys, we appreciate her so much because if you've never dealt with doing a festival, gathering up vendors, right? It's a hard job to do. And so tonight, I recognize Joanne as my good citizen for January.
That's my daughter.
Oh, hello.
I had to get that long.
Hello.
She had to get that long.
Okay, do you want to say anything, Joanne?
Well, this is a great community. I get a lot of support when I do the festivals with the police officers and all the little stores in town. So I just enjoy doing it.
Very good. Well, I have a key to the city. I've made this joke before, so I apologize. It's a real small key, so it doesn't open anything, but it will look really good on your lapel.
Thank you.
And that's a key for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, we have our business spotlight this year, for this month. And that's my good friend Twyla Cordery. Would you come up, Twyla? Twyla operates Seller 66 Restaurant and Wine Bar. It is located in the Ruby Dew Plaza. This establishment has, Kim, remember now when you opened?
Five years ago.
Five years ago. Seller 66 is a beautiful cozy restaurant that offers a full menu of Twyla food. And especially Twyla soups.
That's right.
And mouth-watering appetizers and entrees and wine. Throw that in. Don't listen, kids. Seller 66 boasts a high-end yet comfortable atmosphere where patrons can mingle. And it has fast become a go-to place for girls' nights out or romantic dinner.
That's impressive.
And you know, somebody, Merrimack Regional, I believed, did an article on you. And one of the things that they said was, it's hard to find because she's nestled in the back of the Ruby Dew Plaza. But it's well worth you finding it. And so someone has nominated Seller 66 as our business spotlight. That means, help me guys, that means that she gets advertisement on Facebook, that she gets advertisement on our website. There will be something placed in the lobby that will highlight Seller 66. And then we have a nice proclamation for you too.
That's nice. Thank you.
There you go.
One, two, three.
Get all the pictures, you know. Do you have anything to say to the community?
Well, we are glad that we're still alive and well in Waynesville. We are lost. You know, they used to always joke about Fort Wood being lost in the woods. We're kind of lost in Waynesville being at the back of the plaza. But you know, as the word spreads, the business gets a little bit better. Parking, of course, is always a little bit of an issue. But we seem to be overcoming that with the help of the city and we appreciate that. We are a full-service restaurant, lunch and dinner. We are, a lot of people associate us because we have the name Wine Bar in our name that we are a bar-bar. We are really more of a restaurant. But we do have a nice selection of wines from Missouri and throughout the world. We get our list, I may add, of wines because of basically our military, which we appreciate. They've been all over the world. So if they have a favorite, we always try it. If we like it, we'll stock it for them. So we just try to be easygoing and more of a family type affair and we appreciate you.
Very good. Appreciate you, Twyla. Very good. Well, this is always so much fun. Twyla don't leave yet because there's going to be a good one, okay? Bruce, would you come up with me, please? We have a special, special award and announcement tonight. And I'm going to let Bruce do it.
Chief, could you please come down?
You're in shock, aren't you?
Tony, we're going to appoint a new police chief tonight, so he's a little bit leery.
Did you not know your wife was here? I love it. Come on up.
Okay, I'll help you. Okay, what we have, what we have tonight is a special award for our chief of police. He was submitted to the American Police Hall of Fame for a lifesaving award by his fellow officers for his recognition of his unselfish actions during emergency situation which resulted in the savings of a human life. We had a young man who was going to commit suicide. And the chief, due to his training, his experience, he was able to talk that young man out of committing that act and saved the young man's life. And his fellow officers recommended chief for this award and we're very honored to present it to the chief for tonight. So thank you, chief, for your actions. It just shows your professionalism, experience. And it went to good work when you saved a man's life. So thank you very much. Grab that on the money.
The plaque?
This is his award?
Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, we're ready.
One, two, three.
Okay.
You're still the chief of police.
Wait a minute, come back, come back.
You said I was retired.
And, and, okay. Give this to him. And, looky here, we have medals. Not only do you have a medal, you have a lapel pin as well as the bar for your uniform. And that comes again from the Police Hall of Fame. And then I would like very much if your officers would come up and gather around us for a nice picture. We have certificates for you. I don't know what to hold. You want me to hold that? Can you hold them both?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Come on up, guys.
You can get some out of each side.
Come on up, Vic, come on up. Come on up. Guys, how are you? How are you?
Can you get this in all in one picture?
Oh, yes, come on. Just because you're off duty, right? I thought that was you guys sitting there. Come on up.
They're undercover.
They're plain clothes. Now this is blowing their cover for tonight.
We'll do it after I get these, okay? And we'll get to life with you after we finish this.
That's the only one getting out of the car.
You got everybody? We might have to get a few ropes here if we need to.
Stand on a chair.
Yeah, I got to get the whole. I've been working out.
Turn in. Very good. Lady back here, got it? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you. You stay here though. And your wife, would your wife and son come up, please? Isn't that special?
It is. Thank you.
There we go.
Ready? One, two, three.
Very good.
I think it's just random that your family showed up tonight.
You know, that's for me, isn't it? That's bad math. You want to say anything?
No, I'm still shocked. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Well, guys, that's always the fun stuff. And then of course, you scouts get to see us get down to business. And so we meet once a month and we have business to do tonight. We're going to begin with our board and commission reports. And our first, of course, is my friend Marge Beamer. If you'd come up and talk to us about the park board. Marge, if you wouldn't mind flipping that around again.
I could talk that way. Okay, our meeting was called over at six o'clock. We had a court. We passed our minutes from November. And the only reason that we didn't have 100% to show up is because Mr. Mott came back from Germany and had to go straight to Columbia. And you know about Ice Stuff?
Yes, he's had his detached retinopathy. And we sent him our thoughts tonight.
And I believe he was there again today or yesterday. So he's having problems with that. We've all been thinking about him. The master gardeners are kind of worried about the extension, the district extension up in Crocker. They didn't get the funding this year that they thought they were going to get. But they're still going to keep working on it and trying to keep it open. We don't know what's going to happen with it. And I'm in touch with Mrs. Olmstead off and on and she keeps me up to date what's going on. They do have a sign ready to go to go down to the demonstration garden. And it's supposed to look pretty much like the sign that's down there for the RME park in that area. So it's going to look pretty good. The WSR, Winter Sports ends February 22nd. Spring start registration is already on the go and it ends February 7th. At the VFW 3168 Lakeland, they got a black light bingo. And that's for raising funds for the organization. And they're still looking for sponsors. So anybody knows any way to get sponsors, they would way, way appreciate it.
I think we posted a flyer on the city page about that and it's February 29th.
Correct. Which, yeah. And Park Superintendent report, the biggest news I got is we have a retiree in Randy Brown.
We do.
And that was his last meeting. He stayed for the whole meeting, didn't have to because he pushed his books right over the tray. And he was happy to do so. But this flood kind of messed up his exit a little bit. I don't know what the damage is. I haven't had an update on it yet. I didn't get with him on it. But we're going to miss Randy. He's been there, what, 21 years, I believe? And Trey will do a good job. And I'm in contact with him off and on. And I've been dealing with him since I've been the chairman, talking to him about things. So we're going to work together really well. He does a great job. So I think the transition will be very good. The rest of my report's going to be about 2020. I had a meeting in December with Mr. Harold, Mr. Doyle, Mr. McDonald, and Councilman Brown on what's coming up in the parks. The first two things are in here. A lot of people don't always read these when they get them in their deals. You need to start reading them and they'll tell you some things. One of them is the pathway going up to Benton into the square is on schedule to be done this summer or start spring. And the bathroom down by the fields will be taken care of. So all that's part of it. The other thing is, the sign that I was talking about, my last report, are already up. I was in shock it was that quick, but the signs are already up, both entrances. No pets allowed at the Little Hero's Playground except for
Service dogs.
And so we've got the signs up and I know it's already been said 100 times, but this way it's right there in your face when you walk in. That doesn't mean they're going to look in it, but it's there. I'm going to move over to Tiger Park. We got a lot of work to do on it because we have, we can't really shop for playground equipment for that until we find out what our space is going to be. I'll be getting together with Trey. We got to have markings put out for what's underground because when we put the equipment in, we got to do it. So we're going to be working on that. The electric company did a great job in getting out there and fixing all the outlets in the pavilion. And they put the new light, the night light up there that was left off the list for them to do. They didn't for them to do. They didn't even know it was there yet. But anyway, it's there now. And I appreciate what they did for that. Summit, everything's done at Summit except for the gravel. We're having trouble finding the proper gravel to go in there to fill in the extra 10 feet that was added to the park. And the closest I heard that they can find it is Jeff City. And so, it's gonna be between Trey and Mr. Harold. We're gonna try and find a place closer and get it.
Could I ask what the play, what are the play features there? Is it like a little barrel that rocks back and forth?
No, we, uh, what it is, it's a, a small slide for toddlers.
Okay.
And then it's a, what they call it, a steamroller. And it has two wheels that they can crawl through the wheels.
That's what I saw. I thought it was a barrel of some kind.
Yeah, and then, you know, they have the driving deal. Each, each unit is multiple.
More aimed at little kids.
That's what they asked for when we had our meeting down there last year.
Very good.
And also, we added one more toddler swing. We took one swing out and we transferred it to Tiger, or they did, I should say, I didn't do it. And then put a half seat in. Now, we have a half seat and a full seat toddler swing.
For the baby ones where it holds it?
Yes, there's one for the baby and there's one for a little bit bigger than the baby. And it has a chain in front of it. It's, hey, I know.
Can I, can I do this for you before you talk about the dog park?
I was gonna make that laugh.
Okay, okay.
But you go right ahead.
That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
I know, I've had a few texts from you, so I...
I'm very excited.
I, I actually did go up to the meeting this month, and the Park Board meeting up in St. Robert.
St. Robert is open there, is yeah?
And I mentioned what we're doing and they told me what they had.
Very good.
My, my equal up there is Mr. Newkirk, which I'm sure everybody knows. And we had a good talk and everything about a lot of things. But one of the things they said was, is that our park's gonna be bigger than theirs. And they said when they have a, a overflow, they're gonna send them down to ours.
Okay.
I hope that makes you happy.
That's real.
I knew you would, would, okay. As far as the park itself, the dog park down at the Rubidoo, Mr. Doyle figured out approximately there's an acre there. It's gonna be up against the treatment plant right off the pine.
Cool.
And there's gonna be planned parking in the front. And there'll be two gates to go in. And the reason for that is if you divide it up for small dogs and big dogs.
Oh, okay.
And we don't know when that's gonna happen on that one. We're gonna have the gates there. The only thing we gotta work on, it was brought up at the Park Board meeting, and Trey brought that up, how can we get our equipment in? We can't go through the regular 36-inch gates. So, that's gonna have to be added. And I'll get with Mr. McDonald on that, 'cause he's looking up prices now. And they're using, they're gonna be putting a six-foot chain link fence around and a weed barrier underneath the fence, so that the workers don't have to weed eat it all the time.
Very good.
Which'll help out a lot.
Very good.
And it'll be close to the new bathroom and, of course. And basically, that's, oh, RV Park. RV Park, money was pulled aside to start paving the spaces. It's gonna be done increments, so that there'll be less maintenance again when there's floods, which every time there's a flood, they gotta go in there and put things back together and everything before they get them in it. With, 'cause the pads, they'll be able to get with them quicker.
Nice.
You said paved. Are you gonna do concrete or you talk to asphalt?
I'm sure, that I didn't ask at the meeting, but I'm sure it's concrete.
Concrete.
Asphalt, the last one.
Right. Right. Yeah, 'cause it won't work out too well with the others. So, yeah, I figured it was concrete. That was one thing I forgot to ask at the meeting.
I also noticed that our bathroom has a problem, has some issues down there. I've been reading your notes.
Core one?
Yep.
The what now?
Core one bathroom, the shower house.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, the shower house from the RV park was pulled out of there because of the flood, of course. They knew it was coming and they got everything taken care of quickly. They're gonna be hooking it up, up at the shed. And they're gonna do a lot of repairs and do some updates. And they're gonna have to order parts. And there's only like two places in the world I guess you get parts for that thing. And so, that's gonna be an ongoing thing. In other words, Trey's gonna have his hands full.
Is this to do the normal use, or have we got some people stuffing stuff down there that has caused it?
That's not, that's, from what I understand, that's not a problem. There's some of that going on, but that's not all the problem. There is actually a leak in the wall of one of the bathrooms, one of the, that left bathroom. And...
I don't think they just covered all the problems yet, that...
Correct.
They're working on it right now. They execute the repairs and get all the equipment. So, I'm not sure what all the problems are. Yeah, but they're working to fix them. I think they, I think they have to work on the grinder pump and some other things.
But, yeah, that's why they're hooking it up at the set, so they can keep an eye on it and figure out what to do and what not to do. So, down to that for winter also.
Is our, is RV Park able to open now? I know we don't have anything down there.
We gotta do a little bit more work. Some of the road washed out. We've got some temporary repairs that need to harden out a little bit. It's planned on opening next Tuesday. And I think we had to replace some of the breakers. They got wet, so we had, we had to replace those and some of the road. So, with all those things, the plan date is next Tuesday.
Okay, very good. Anything else Lawrence?
Our meeting was adjourned two minutes early from an hour. It was a long talk, so...
An hour is a good meeting.
Hey, an hour, well, I've been keeping it under an hour the best I can.
That's right.
This went a little longer than usual. So, does anybody else have any questions about anything?
Anything else for Lawrence? Thank you guys, we appreciate you all. Appreciate you Lawrence.
Thank you.
Okay, planning and zoning, Cecil was not at that meeting, so I've asked Mr. Harold just to give a rundown. And we do not have the minutes, because it was just this week. And he's probably gonna tell you why.
Yes, we had the meeting on Tuesday, so we'll present the meetings at the next City Council. The major action they, they took was to appoint Pilot Cordray as the Chairman of Planning and Zoning, our previous Chairman, due to work-related issues, has resigned Janet Kreider. And they also reviewed the building codes with the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, we're looking at potentially adopting the 2018 building codes with some, quite a few changes. And the building staff, Nathan, Mitch, and John Doyle kinda went over those, those changes with the commission. They asked a few questions and they did recommend or make a motion to, you know, forward that on. So, in the future, we'll bring that to the appropriate committee and Vito can bring that forward to City Council. And there's no hurry to adopt, but we'll let you kinda look at it the first time and discuss them amongst yourselves and bring it, probably bring back at the next meeting too, after we resolve all your questions, so.
Bruce, do we have many builders at this place?
No, we did not. No, I think we only had, maybe only one builder.
One or two builders. And the fire chief, fire chief was there.
Two builders, we had two builders. And I think Doug Gerico, the fire, the fire chief, was there. And two builders, so we didn't get a lot of input.
But, but we've had a public meeting before.
Yes, we did. This is the second meeting we've had that we've invited the public to.
Okay, any questions for Bruce? All right, I'd like to remind everybody to turn your microphone on when you're speaking, so that Mr. Wallace can pick you up. Okay, we're gonna move on to our committee reports. And Councilman Brown, talk to us about roads and grounds.
I called meeting order on the 9th of January at 4:30 PM. We had a forum. We started off discussing the paving program and some changes that were recommended by our street superintendent from what was originally planned based upon need. We have a street inspection that goes through every street within the community on a recurring basis. And he's just now finishing up the most recent iteration of that. So, he changed a few streets around and we went over those. I also asked all council persons present to take a look at their boards and confirm that they agree with that. Unless they have some streets that are showing some excessive wear that wasn't caught, bring them back to the meeting in the future, maybe we can get those in. The other thing we talked about is the sidewalk projects that we're looking at. GW Lane, putting a sidewalk along it is the phase one from down towards the high school down to Old Highway H. The second phase of that will be to take it from Old Highway H down to the bridge. And then also looking at possibly funds available from the Rubidoo Bridge down towards the library. Street department updates, Mr. Adams stated it's been slow the last couple of months. Instead, most of the time doing leaf removal and cleaning out gutters, drains, and ditches. A little bit of tree cutting and stump, cleaning up the stump though. Other business, safety evaluation alert. If you remember, we did change insurance companies for the city. Had a good savings to us. We had an inspection by their folks and they inspected our street department as well as our gas department and found no issues whatsoever, which is great, because that could cause our rates to go up if we fail to meet the requirements they've set for us. There was a necessity to go into closed session. We went into that at 4:52 and we came out at 5:23. They're being known for the business. We adjourned.
Very good.
Your questions?
Questions for Mike? All right. Utilities, Mike? Do you have your mic on? Just saying.
I don't know, can everybody hear it?
Yeah, better.
I called that meeting order on the 7th of January at 3:30. We started off with major projects and goals, including the electric system reliability. We're finishing up the C to D feeder lines. Let's finish the rest of the pole inspections with our GIS and GIS, our system. Basically, what that is, is they're running like a sonogram on the poles, which then we can, that'll tell us if a pole's bad underground. And we found 14 last year doing that, to where some of the poles were ready to fall over because of what was below the surface that you could not visibly see. And so, we're finishing up that. Plus, we're reparking every pole and putting it in the GIS system. So, we know where every pole for our, in our electrical system is. And we'll be able, they're being numbered, so, oh, hey, pole number 453, everybody will know, right, which pole we're talking to and mapping it out. Continuing the reconductory to feeder line B, going from Dire Street and continue to the Rubidoo. Continue with aggressive right-of-way clearing. Finishing the reconductor of the line on the bluff circle and Main Street, finishing to continue to build more access roads. What all that is, is we found that we had some poles in areas we couldn't get to. And when a tree took some poles out, it took a lot longer to repair, 'cause we had to build a road to get to it, 'cause it was nothing but mud. We stuck trucks, we had to pull back o's and all kinds of stuff in there to move stuff around. So, we have been building roads. We've cut right-of-ways, put in the connection between feeder line C and D, which basically what that allows us to do is to backfeed the system, so that the amount of people affected by power outage will be significantly reduced. We've, we've been doing reconductory on a lot of our lines already. We had lines that were 40 years old and the wire was old. And so, replacing it with newer wire, better conductors, newer poles, reducing, we had places that had three-phase electric, where you did not need three-phase. We pulled that out, we put in new wire and that. It's all raising the reliability of the power system throughout the entire community is what all this amounts to. So, we have less power outages. And in fact, with our reclosers, we've got seven reclosers throughout the city that we've installed, based upon an electrical engineer going through and making his recommendations. And what that did over the past year, it saved a total of 84 electrical outages that would've taken place by automatically breaking and rebuilding the lines. So, we're doing lots of work to keep our citizens' power in the electric department. And Mr. Sheldon has done a great job in that. Wastewater improvements, water line extension to High Point, we are working on that. It's still working through some of the issues with easements. Industrial Park, we have some customers in there that recently, they've granted some licenses to conduct business in there. So, we're looking at getting in there. One, we're gonna be paving Tribune Road with the paving allowance for this year, which is the main road going into the industrial park for those businesses. We are also, gotta put some sewer lines in there and stuff like this for those businesses. We already have water and gas over to it. We've got one of our water towers where we backfeed water into our system, the city water. We also, we have mounted SCADA, which is a system to where we can monitor all our wells and all our water towers throughout the city. We currently only have two wells doing that, but we can operate them and adjust how they work from City Hall. We've now put the money in the budget for this year to get every one of our systems on SCADA, so they can all be checked on, monitored, and adjusted right here at City Hall, as well as down through Water Department. E-billing, e-billing currently has about 40 customers. I thought you said 16? No, 40. Okay, 40 customers. If you'd rather go one line and do your billing for your utilities, you can come in, get signed up for it, and you'd get your bill earlier and have more time to deal with it from the time you got there, instead of waiting on the mail.
Plus, you get a real, real nice color photograph of the newsletter.
Oh, wow.
Which is attached to your bill.
Good. Mr. Eldridge presented the committee with an annual summary of the work completed in 2019. We include, we've had three new employees, two of which received Class A licenses, one employee received his DS2 license, 209 work orders, 37 sewer work orders. Replaced several sewer lines, rebuilt the plant rotors, aeration system, installed new aeration system in the sludge pit, replaced motors at Wells 3, Wells 6, rebuilt and replanted along the new control panels in Wells 2. Adjusted the center, the new jail, we've done the water line extension, plus have put in a new hydrant, new manhole, northern pipes. It has a brand-new water tank like the one that we had to replace on Sunset. We've got one going in right now, it's being placed in. We've also built a booster pump station to be able to push that water out of that tank to all the people who live on that hill. And we rebuilt the pumps at our lift station, at pumps at Risky Road, and built in a bypass for pressure-reduction valves, raised multiple fire hydrants, and fixed five to six, six leaking valves. The electric department has added two new employees, a first-year apprentice, a second-year apprentice. A current employee graduated into his fourth-year apprentice and a one-year adjournment requirement. We've done several pole changeouts. Out of those 14 poles that were identified last year, we only had one of those remaining. But as you know, we've had several storms this year that took out poles in the interim. So, we've actually been replacing a lot more than just the 14 poles that were identified. So, we'll have all of those done this year, in fact, shortly. We've done two mutual aid supports, one in Columbia and one in Jackson, Missouri. We had a couple of power outages that we had to do, like at the pole on the square right near the post office. We did that on Saturday, because of, it would affect all the, a lot of businesses up there. November and December... November and December work orders, we had eight power outages, we did fourteen streetlights, two trees needed to be trimmed, seven miscellaneous, three new services, and two meter tests. Mr. York from the gas department, at his department, Plan Nineteen, completed new line installation for the Justice Center, new line installed for the Parker Pine Archville, adds to the addition of Waynesville Middle School. We repaired a couple of creek crossings that had become exposed and changed out some old regulators and some meters. Mr. represent the committee with a, well, I've already covered the Myrna letter, that they did look at the gas and street. There was a necessity for closed session, we went into that at three fifty-three, we came out at four thirty-one, and committee, there being no further business, I closed the meeting at four thirty-one P M. Questions?
Very good. Anything for Mike? Whew, that was a long one tonight. Hey, something Mike reminded me of that I wanted to say. Do you guys remember, some of you weren't on council, but when we bought the industrial park, we voted to name our streets after the displaced communities that took, that disappeared when Fort Leonard Wood was built. And so our first one is Tribune Street. And I don't have my phone, but Wildwood, Bloodland, West Wind, there's like six of them, and those are the streets that are going to be over there. I think that's pretty cool. And our first street is Tribune. For you kids back there that were boring to death, do you know that when you look up weather in Waynesville and Fort Leonard Wood, up pops T B N. That stands for Tribune. Tribune was a little community that sets where the airport was, and that's why it still has that call letter. And so our main street is going to be Tribune, so that's exciting. We've been working on two things with our utilities, and we need ordinances to change some of those things. First one is ordinance number twenty-three ninety-six has to do with natural gas contract with Richland. Counselor.
Thank you. An ordinance approving an amendment, ordinance number twenty-three ninety concerning an agreement between the city of Waynesville and city of Richland, natural gas fixing at effective date. And ordinance approving amendment, ordinance number twenty-three ninety concerning an agreement between the city of Waynesville and city of Richland, natural gas fixing at effective date.
Very good. For you kids back there, he has to read that twice because state law says he has to. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Ed, seconded by Mike. Ed, is there anything you'd like to add? Mr. Harold, I believe we're all up to date on what these issues are, any questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farner.
Yes.
That ordinance passes. We have ordinance number twenty-three ninety-seven. Counselor.
And ordinance approving an amendment to ordinance number twenty-two forty-two, an agreement between the city of Waynesville and Ziggibine Sanitation Service for Solid Waste Management and Recycling Services fixing at effective date. And ordinance approving an amendment to ordinance number twenty-two forty-two, an agreement between the city of Waynesville and Ziggibine Sanitation Service for Solid Waste Management and Recycling Services fixing at effective date.
Very good. This is for the public, this is an extension of negotiation with Ziggibine Sanitation. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Cecil. Are there any questions or comments? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Farner.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Yes.
Councilman France.
And that ordinance passes. Very good. We pick up the pace here a little bit. Councilman Liberty, we have the Finance and Human Resources Committee.
Meeting was held on January ninth. It was scheduled to start at five o'clock due to another meeting coming over, we started at five twenty-nine. Forum was present, we reviewed the bills and approved to pay the bills. Mr. Harold reported to the committee that as of this date, we have over three point million in Citibank accounts with two point seven in restricted accounts. Mr. Harold reported as of the end of the year, we're at twenty-three million, six hundred and twelve, six hundred and one ninety-nine in expenses and revenue. Mr. Harold stated that 2019, we utilized a total of five hundred and forty-six thousand E C A reserves, order to pay off the city spec building. Mr. Harold reviewed the list of projects and goals for our finance department in 2020. He stated that we need to plan, coordinate, execute financing for major utility improvements. These improvements include electric, expansion, water tower, storage, central service, wastewater infrastructure. Amber Bott stated her goals were to streamline and improve the city financial procedures involving credit cards, bank reconciliation deposits, and lottery payments. Mr. Harold stated new minimum wage for 2020 is nine forty-five an hour. He stated the city will not start any new employees below the grade of one step two on a pay schedule. Mr. Harold stated that the annual budget, the annual city audit is ten and unblown scheduled to begin February twenty-fourth. Mr. Harold reviewed letter from Myrna regarding their site visit. There was a need for closed session for legal personnel in real estate. We want in closed session at five forty-nine, return regular session at six twelve P M. Next scheduled meeting will be February thirteenth, 2020.
Cecil says he's sorry for yanni on the line.
No longer.
I'm picking on you, picking on you. Very good. Any questions for Clarence on finance?
Okay.
That's a lot of numbers. Okay, moving on, we have Clarence, you keep talking, this is Police and Emergency Services.
January ninth was that meeting, three thirty, we called the order. We, we discussed proposed ordinance on A T V usage on city street. Several citizens made complaints about the safety concern. There was one incident where someone almost hit an A T V. We put out a notice telling people that this was a safety issue. City council has discretion aside whether or not to allow them on the street. Mr. Harold provided research that showed A T Vs are not safe on city street. Safety statistics show that the people can get hurt or killed on paved streets. Mr. Harold recommends an ordinance to prohibit A T V committee is in favor of proposed ordinance that will be brought to us the next meeting. Signaling that traffic circle, Mr. Harold stated he would like to propose ordinance for signing for when you exit the traffic circle. Missouri driver guide handbook says you must turn on your right turn signal to let people know you're exiting. Also, another ordinance proposed on restriction of driving down the middle turn lane. Vehicle cannot be driven down the turn lane except when preparing for or making a left-hand turn in a roadway. This would increase our safety if we could have an ordinance stated that they cannot do that down the middle lane. Animal shelter update, that's been tabled. Police department update, Mr. Harold stated chief court over received a certificate of recognition versus support of the day of program. There was a need for closed session, committee entered closed session at four, return open at four twenty-one, adjourned at four twenty-one. Next scheduled meeting will be February sixth, three thirty.
Very good. I think Clarence, you have the award for quickest report. And I'm going to say something because I've had all kinds of phone calls about B. And I don't know if any of you guys have, have you? Word got out that we were looking at traffic circle laws, and I've had a couple of really rather nice notes, but both of them, of course, were not in favor of this. I replied to both of them, it is state law, and you can get a ticket now. So, you know, it's really, it's already there. What we're looking at is trying to make it a better law for our city. And so, you know, there's some things to think about there. The other thing that I've had some comments about is the driving down the middle. There's no, there's no argument there. You should not be driving down the middle of the turn lane. It's dangerous, people. Don't do that.
Nor is it a merge lane.
It is not a merge lane. I know, I know, I'm in trouble. And then A T V. So our committee really is taking up some, I think, interesting ordinances, and so if you have any questions, contact your council people, yes.
On the roundabout, you know, I tried to, if you turn your signal on too early, our roundabout is not real big.
Right, it's not a traffic circle.
Yeah, and so the problem is, is they turn on a little bit too early, we're going to cause accidents because that guy will think he's taking off, and he ain't taking off.
And something I was going to bring up, I kind of came out, I'm not in favor of this, but one of the things I was going to bring up was, I always signal if someone's waiting. If someone's waiting to come, you know, off the road from Buckhorn, I always signal that I'm turning right. That's what you should do. As far as me signaling, every time I go in and out of that thing, I don't do it, and so maybe I'm breaking the law.
Mayor, I think it depends on whether drivers are affected, if they're not, that doesn't make a difference.
Yes, very good.
If someone's going to be affected, that's behind you.
Very good.
And I think that's why I think you should signal.
Very good.
And you only signal when you leave.
Yes, when I leave.
You're not breaking the law if you don't signal going in, only if you don't signal coming out.
And that was the question that I got the call about, was are we over ordnancying things?
Regulating.
Over regulating things because there's already laws out there.
Well, and again, it is state law. We just don't have a local ordinance about it.
Actually, I don't think it is state law, which is reason I proposed that, because the police have stopped two people coming out and didn't signal. And the police can only stop people if there's a violation of law, and the state law on turn signal doesn't apply specifically to the roundabout.
Oh, okay.
Which is reason I proposed that.
Okay, I don't believe that, at least I didn't hear it explained that way, so that's kind of different.
Right.
Okay, but we'll be discussing that, guys, and you might want to listen and see what your constituents say. So now, I bet Mr. Harold probably has the award for the quickest report as he tells us about the airport because Councilman Wilson is not here.
Mayor, we had a meeting in December, we reviewed the budget and the operations report. They approved the new budget, which is the budget that we've already approved through city council. We talked about some improvements or suggestions to the, to our airport certification manual, and we were making some routine changes there. We went over the parallel taxiway project, there was a few things at that time that still need fixed. We talked about the passenger terminals, I think Mr. Doyle was out there yesterday and Miriam to go through a final inspection on there, and we got a mark in the board in our next meeting. Excuse me, any questions?
Very good. He has the award, what do you think?
Well, you know, I can always say I've got a written report and everything.
And here it is.
Yeah. I mean, his reports, he gets by with a heck of a lot.
He does, he does.
You wouldn't say that.
Okay, and Bill?
I can't beat that.
Economic development.
We met on January seventh, kind of a fast meeting as usual. Our major talks was on the 2020 projects and goals. Mr. Harold discussed some of the things, including the industrial park projects, the new building codes that they had the meeting about last night, planning some support for community economic development organizations and continued commercial and industrial development. We also discussed the research regarding the adopting of the building codes, which is still ongoing, I presume. And then our economic business development issues, spotlighted, which we saw earlier for Cellar sixty-six with Miss Twyla. The Christmas tree decorations, which I think got all of our attention, and especially the cost of them.
Exactly.
And the fact that we're going to have to look into possibly updating some of the decorations and how we're going to go about it. Then the historical signage for the Talbot House. Mayor, you stated that you spoke with Mr. Ogden about the signage. And the special events, which is coming up here real quick, our team of cooks is going to do their chili cook-off at the art on January twenty-fifth, and I presume there's a full team of helpers, is that right, Mr. Harold?
Yes, I think we've got a, we have a full team, I think it's the, some of our staff is going to be the Spice Girls.
The Spice Girls.
Very good.
Remember the name.
Well, I will be there to put money in your little cup.
Are you going to be the Spice Guy?
I don't know what I'm going to be. I think that's been delegated John North.
John and the Spice Guys, the Spice Girls, John and the Spice Girls.
He's thinking about the, I felt John, that theme, that's what he's thinking about.
Oh, God.
So last year, weren't you guys roasting the chili chicks?
Yep.
So I hope you win something. Did you win anything last year?
Second place.
Second place, very good.
Another twenty bucks.
Somebody give me, y'all give me money and I'll put it in the cup, okay? Very good. Any questions for Bill? Lot of stuff going on there. Were you through, Bill, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And then we have some appointments to make, and I've enjoyed the scouts being here tonight, it's been quite funny. This one here wants to know everything about that video camera. I think, Mr. Wallace, I think you've got a future student sitting down here, he's doing this to you. Guys, we have some appointments to make tonight, and I would highly recommend these. Madam Clark, could we do these together, or should we do them separate?
You need to do them separate.
Separate, okay. The first one is a reappointment of David Lowe as our municipal court judge, and I would highly recommend him, and I would entertain a motion from this side.
Motion.
Motion by Mike Curtis, seconded by Ed. And Madam Clark, call the roll, or can we do hands?
Councilman Farner.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yeah.
I tell you, we are quite funny tonight, aren't we? David is reappointed, and now I'm asking you to give Ralph one more year. Ralph wants one more year with us. Ralph, let me say, I enjoyed working with you, and you have been a good friend as well as a good counselor. So I would recommend from this side, a motion. Clarence, Clarence makes a motion, and Bill Farner makes a second, and Madam Clark, would you call the roll for Ralph?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conway.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Captain.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Okay.
Councilman Dick Curtis.
Okay.
Councilman Florida.
This okay, is not okay.
Yes.
Ralph, I believe you were reappointed.
I think yes.
And guys, I always look forward to, we're almost through, kids, you okay? We're almost through. I always look forward to Bruce's end-of-the-year report, and of course, the last two years, we have not had a meeting in December, and so that's what he's bringing up to us today. Again, it is always full of the great things that we've done over the year, and Bruce, I'll give you a chance to give your report and see what you want to highlight.
Okay, I'll just highlight a few things, we talked about a lot of them today, but of course, there is a lot of things in the D H report. First of all, we made a lot of improvements at the airport, we got Contra Air End, we did a grant to get them going, and we, at the same time, we expanded our parallel taxiway, and we were putting in some terminal modifications to handle the increased load. So I think our airport was going very good. I'm very proud of the work the street department did on Lynn Street, they replaced that sidewalk, made it ADA accessible, and did a great job there. We dealt the long-term, long-term replacement issue as well. I think Mike highlighted a lot of things we did in the utilities this year, we're always in making utility improvements. Real House Number Two was one of the highlights, of course, they did a lot of work repairing and upgrading some of the water lines in the area. Let's see, we're starting to work, of course, we did a lot of work on the Northern Heights pad, and of course, that's going up now.
pad, and of course, that's going up now as we speak. We put a fence around the Sunset Water Tank and extended a water line to Loughlin Park and new gas service for our church. A lot of improvements in our utility side there. And I think we highlighted many of the improvements on the electric side as well. We did have some challenges in the year. We had to make the power outage at the high winds in May. We had a flood during the year. We supported a couple of communities with mutual aid. Overall, I think we had a very, very good, a very good year, and we did, we made a lot of progress for the city. We did have some employees, of course, went under new opportunities. We appreciated them. We promoted some other employees. One, of course, was Amber, who was promoted to the finance officer. And then Stephanie Luthen retired, and we bought on some new employees. Of course, one includes Mr. Don Doyle. We got a list of a lot of those employees that we're proud to bring on here in 2019. So I think it's a very good year for the city. We made a lot of progress, continued our progress that we're making in the city.
Very good. Any questions for Bruce? Very good. And I believe Mr. France down there gave a very good report on all the utilities. And of course, she had like, what, three pages, I believe? And then the finances, Clarence gave us an update on that. So we're, guys, we're at the end of our meeting. Yay! But at the end, the counselor, the councilman always get the last word. And Mike, we'll start with you.
Weather's supposed to start heading in about 2:00 a.m. this tomorrow, well, this morning, this coming morning, and proceed. So be mindful of that. Check it out. Give yourself extra time. If you've got to go somewhere tomorrow, be safe. Remember, kids are going to be out trying to get to school. So if it's slip, please slow it down.
Very good. Ed?
Pretty good, I said.
Very good.
Remember to signal going through here.
When you leave it.
The term you signal is required by the law.
Very good.
And common sense, lessons in the book they give you when you learn how to drive.
Yeah, when you take that test.
I'm assuming that the, that's the major thing I know, that the driver's ed teacher at the high school, high school teachers, people, that they're not supposed to use the center lane, and they're caught.
I'm sure he does.
What's the book say on how far in advance of your turning are you supposed to signal? Doesn't say it though.
I have no idea. We'll research that.
It does.
It's been a day or two since it took a test.
Clarence?
First off, I would like to thank everybody that came to tonight's meeting. We love to have citizens come. Thank you to all the city employees and city staff doing an excellent job and make us look good.
Amen, that's what I was going to say. Jerry?
The Utilities Committee brought up the fact that e-billing really suggests that the citizens look into that.
Yes.
To make it easy for them and easy for our staff to handle billing.
And we spend thousands of dollars on postage every year. We could use that, those thousands of dollars doing other things. And I was the first to sign up, and I actually like it. So again, you get that color newsletter instead of black and white. And Mike?
Mr. France gave a lot of technical things in his report, which half of it I don't understand. All I know is my electricity rarely goes off now. Thank you for the upgrades. Also, this is Martin Luther King.
It is.
Weekend. I challenge you to get on YouTube and listen to I Have a Dream. It's still relevant for us today.
Nice. Cecil?
Very good. I don't have anything.
Not a thing, because you're tired. Bill?
I want to thank the scouts for coming tonight. Woo-hoo! It's always good to see them come here and learn. Well, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Always enjoy the scouts coming. Were you through?
I'm through.
I was just going to say to you kids, this is kind of boring to you guys because you don't understand a lot of the stuff that we're doing, but we're actually running the city. And so when you flip the lights on in the morning, this man at the end works on a committee that keeps that going. And in fact, the first thing I had on my list tonight was to say how proud I am of our staff. Aren't they wonderful? And they do such great things. And so I wanted to say that, and somebody argued it. And then just as I leave tonight, I did get a special present this week from one of my military friends, and I did want to share it with you guys, but I'm not going to give everybody one unless you want it, okay? But it says, "Our mayor can beat up your mayor." So if you would like to proudly display, "Our mayor can beat up your mayor," you're welcome to come and get one of these, okay? All right, that's been an interesting meeting. Everybody have a great weekend and be safe. Wait a minute.
Special.
Special.